Hi, welcome everybody. This is the Village of Oklaun Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. We are meeting in the Village Hall Auditorium, 9446 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting number 2024-15. It is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, and it is 7:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vorderer.
Present.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Stocker.
Here.
Trustee Desmond. Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke.
Here.
Trustee Olaniach.
Here. We have a call. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments?
Yes. Let's see.
Just a reminder, you have three minutes, okay, to state your case. You'll be timed, and we ask you to wrap it up in three minutes.
Fadya Mohammed, is that correct?
Good evening, ma'am. Are you an Oklaun resident?
I've been an Oklaun resident for 23 years now.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm confident by now that most of you know the story of Murad Kurti, which is my son that got killed by LeAnn Cusack. I'm confident that most of you know, but for those of you who don't know, let's do a little recap. My son Murad Kurti was killed June 5th last year in front of our home, where Murad resided for most of his life. Murad was killed by LeAnn Cusack, who admitted to being drinking, admitted to coming from a local bar where she was just at prior to hitting my son and killing him. LeAnn proceeded to drive a block away. After she heard everyone screaming and running to the scene, she decided to pull over. When the Oklaun police arrived, they smelled alcohol on LeAnn's breath. They asked her if she had been drinking, and LeAnn admitted to drinking. LeAnn, now, remind you, she refused to cooperate. The Oklaun Police Department did not issue a forced blood draw. Instead, they allowed LeAnn to call her mother-in-law, call her boyfriend, call her attorney, spend 15 minutes on the phone while my son was dying on the ground. They allowed her to get advice from all three, and she refused to cooperate, which is her right, and they refused to issue a blood draw. Now tell me why a grieving mother has to go conduct her own investigation? Why? Tell me why did I have to go to the bar and conduct my own investigation? Tell me why they allowed her boyfriend to give his testimony and divert them to a completely different bar, and they listened to him, and they took his word for it? Tell me why did I have to go to the bar along with my son? A grieving mother shouldn't have to do that. Tell me why did I have to pick up the pieces of her car and put them in a Ziploc bag? Tell me why did I have to make five separate trips to collect my son's personal belongings? Tell me why was I treated like the offender? There's so many questions as to why? 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 What is it? Why did the Oklaun Police Department let LeAnn Cusack go without facing any consequences? Is this something that's okay? Is a person allowed to drink, drive, kill someone, have someone intercede for them, give a false testimony and statement, and send her on her way? Why am I still here, over a year later, fighting for justice? In the Pledge of Allegiance, we all heard liberty and justice for all. Where is my justice? Where is my family's justice? This is not fair. Murad Kurti was a resident of Oklaun his entire life. He moved to Oklaun with his father and I and his brother when he was two years old. He wasn't mentioned as if he was an Oklaun resident. He was mentioned as an unknown identified person.
Ma'am, your three-
LeAnn has been here for two years, and she has the right of way.
Your three minutes are up. I will give you another 30 seconds to wrap it up.
Again, tell me why he wasn't identified or treated as an Oklaun resident? Not that he had any special privileges. Drink and drive and you kill someone, you must pay the consequences. Tell me why the police officers had no disciplinary action towards them? Tell me why the police officers were not sent for further training? Tell me why Hollingsworth was so-called "The Investigator"? Tell me why he gets promoted now? Why did I have to do the investigation? Why don't I have closure? I lost my son, my life, my whole life, my baby. That's not fair. Not that I hear from someone, not a single police officer contacted me. I had to make five separate trips to collect his belongings before any of them could give them to me. They had me on a speed chase back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, treating me as if I was the offender. Why does LeAnn get to go back to the bar and drink four days later after she killed my son? Why did I have to discover that? Why did my attorney and I have to discover that? Why didn't the police officers go down to the bar and get the footage they needed for this investigation? They didn't drop the ball, they never had the ball. They never conducted an investigation.
Ma'am, your time is up. I appreciate it, and I sympathize with the sorrow you must be experiencing. I can't imagine what it feels like to lose your son, or any child for that matter. I'm sorry. Anybody else?
Mohammed S.
Oops, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Mohammed. I don't live in Oklaun, but I work in Oklaun. And I would simply like to give the remainder of my time to Ms. Mohammed to finish her testimony.
Is that allowed? Yes, okay.
May I proceed?
Yes.
Terry, I appreciate you, appreciate your sympathy. I also appreciate you reaching out. You did come and pay your condolences to me at the lake, I remember.
I did.
I specifically remember you saying to me, "I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mrs. Kurti. My condolences," and I know this was a drug-related incident. I specifically remember those words. However, things began to deteriorate as soon as Hollingsworth began investigating. I don't know exactly what happened. I'm not here to get my frustrations out on anyone by any means. This is the first time you guys have heard me speak. You know, it's getting harder and harder and harder as the days go by. It's very difficult to speak about this matter. However, like I said, I do not have any closure. I cannot make sense of things. The question rolls around in my mind and my brain over and over and over again. Why was LeAnn Cusack allowed to kill someone and get away with it? What is the reason? Does she know anyone? Is she related to anyone? Is she having sexual favors with some of the police officers? Is this simply a race issue? There's a million and one questions rolling around in my brain, and I do not have any closure whatsoever. Yet have I had somebody sit down and explain to me and tell me that this is a proper procedure and protocol that we use when anyone drinks and comes out of a bar and kills someone, we say, "Okay, thank you, we believe you, we take your word, go home, that's it." We know that LeAnn lied over and over and over. She says that she was doing 27 miles an hour coming down 91rd Street, which is exactly where my home is. Now, this is a residential area in a school zone. Had LeAnn Cusack been doing 27 miles an hour, my son would not have been flown up in the air and died instantly. I'm sure you all drive. I'm sure we all know that. It's impossible. Driving 25 to 27 miles an hour, you're not going to set someone flying in the air. So that's another lie. Her boyfriend gave the Oklaun Police Department a completely different bar name. They never went to that bar, and they never went to the bar that she said that she was at. I had to go conduct my own investigation. Tell me why they allowed her to go home? That's what I want to know. Why did she leave without facing any consequences whatsoever? This is not right. This is not proper procedure and protocol. Any police station that you talk to, and I don't need to tell you, this is not, unless you tell me otherwise. Can you prove to me that this is what's happening in Oklaun now? People are allowed to drive while they're drunk, kill people? Put yourself in my position for a minute. God forbid, God forbid. Would either of you be okay with the type of investigation that went down had it been one of your family members? Are you telling me that this is normal? This is okay? No, this is not okay. In a deposition, LeAnn Cusack, from her own words, admitted that had they taken her for a forced blood draw, she would have been found to be intoxicated. I have the video. I'm willing to share it with all of you, if you'd like to hear it.
Your three minutes are up, ma'am.
Leila.
Hi, my name is Leila. I also work in Oklaun, and I do want to give the rest of my time to Fadya.
Fadya.
In a deposition, my attorney asks LeAnn Cusack, "Were you aware that you had the right to refuse a blood draw had they forced you to do it? Or if they had forced you to, you know, go to the hospital and do a forced blood draw? Were you aware that it was your right to refuse?" She said, "No." So then he proceeds to say, "So if they had taken you to have a forced blood draw, they would have found you to be intoxicated, correct?" And she said, "Yes," and his exact word. There you go. And you know what? I'm going to play that for you.
Did you know at all? aware of her surroundings, was she looking directly in front of her? She said, "It's possible that she could have looked away at her daughter. It's possible that she was probably picking up food distracted. Her daughter was sleeping one minute, the next minute she was not. She was on the phone, but she was free." So he says, "What do you think could have occurred? What did you think you could have hit possibly?" She says, "Maybe a ball, maybe a kid. He could have fell out of a tree. Is that one of the possibilities? He saw something, the tree, and hit your car?" She said, "Yes." This is who the Oklaun Police Department let go. She's out there drinking and driving again. My son is buried six feet under. But she's at the bars drinking again. So, again, the million-dollar question, why? Why did they let LeAnn Cusack walk away without facing any consequences whatsoever? Had it been reversed, would my son be let go after admitting that he was drinking at a bar? Would they would have said, "Okay, Murad, yeah, we believe you. You only had two drinks. Good night." Is that what you think would have happened? I highly doubt it.
Your time is up again. Is it Amira?
All right. Hello, my name is Amira. I've lived here my entire life. I was born in Oklaun. And I'm not going to give you another play-by-play of what just happened, because you just heard it from Fadya herself. We all know how LeAnn Cusack, a white woman, murdered a Palestinian man, Murad Kurti. We all know that she drove a block down without calling the police and called her boyfriend instead. We all know that the neighbors who came out to call the cops, which usually the driver who hit someone is supposed to call, said that there were tire marks on the floor, and that doesn't happen unless you're speeding. We all know that she admitted that a forcible blood draw would have proven she was drunk. You just heard it. We all know that she got away with murder with nothing more than a $750 speeding ticket. What I want to talk about now is the abhorrent treatment of Murad's family and our community at the hands of your police or Policing Fire Commission. Just last week, I was in this room, just like I was the month before it, and the month before it, and the month before it, for two years. And as if accusing her of doing this for financial gain wasn't enough, I watched several cops stop Murad's mother from bringing in a sugary drink to the meeting. I know it was a sugary drink because the police board proceeded to make snide comments about how there are no sugary drinks allowed in this-- you let a white woman get away with her son's murder. Not a word uttered about it, but the people who are appointed to listen to our concerns about what happens in our village get to go on power trips about sugary drinks. Several of your cops get to gang up on a man half their size and push him out of a door. Your cops get to inappropriately put their hands on children, drag us out of rooms, and laugh in our faces. All of this because we want more than a speeding ticket given to a killer, because we want your cops to face accountability, the same cops, mind you, who beat up a 17-year-old Arab boy the summer before. I'm noticing a trend that I've noticed my entire life, that I'm sure everyone else in this room has also noticed, and that trend is the fact that your racist police get to run rampant in Oklaun with zero repercussions. And the only way that's ever going to improve is through a full, independent, and comprehensive investigation into the violations of the rights of our community, and through firing the three cops who beat a boy to the brink of death, and any cop who swept Murad's murder under the rug. We've tried for two years to go through the Police and Fire Commission, and month after month, we've been stonewalled and ridiculed. We're not asking for much. I'd hope if any of your children were murdered by a drunk driver and that driver was let go, you'd also want some semblance of justice. But apparently, this is a revolutionary concept to the Police and Fire Commission. Revolutionary enough to force Murad's mother to relive the trauma of knowing her son didn't get justice over and over again. We aren't here because we enjoy it. We're tired. We're here because we have an obligation to demand justice, and you have an obligation to meet our demand, because this is frankly disturbing.
Thank you. Nick?
Hello, everyone. I am not a resident of Oklaun, but I do often come here. I have family here, and I've always been involved in the community in many different ways. I come here before you to give my support to Fadya.
I'm sorry, ignore that one.
Go ahead.
Go on.
Okay, sorry. To come give my support to Fadya, who is a member of our community who suffered a tragic loss, we've seen and heard many of the things about Oklaun PD, and I appreciate the many of you who actually paid attention to Fadya, unlike the appointed police board that we've been coming to every single month. One thing that we've pressured and brought to the attention of the police board is that per Oklaun ordinances, they are allowed to give this Board of Trustees recommendations for the police department, and we've been making the demands to, one, fire the police officers who really beat Fadya Bargatla, one of whom was Hollingsworth, who investigated Murad's case and allowed LeAnn Cusack to go free after committing a murder, and to also bring forth actual accountability within the police department as well, bring the attention to you all. I know that they're only able to do that once a year unless you all ask for that, but they've steadily ignored us for two whole years since we've been coming to these meetings. And that's why we're out here, and if you may be irritated with us being out here because we're a mass amount of people, this is not even the size of the community that comes out every single month, and I'm sure you guys probably have heard enough about us. To also add insult to injury, we attended this meeting without a single wave of a metal detector from this lovely police department, because every other time we've come here, we've publicly announced for the community to come out, and it's a clear message from the Oklaun Police Department that they're terrified of the people who are coming to these meetings to call out and hold them accountable. The board is terrified of us coming into these meetings and bringing to your attention the hypocrisy and terrible actions of the police department. And to make our demands clear, we've continuously been coming out to them to make the demands clear, but clearly, nothing has actually come of that because they've totally ignored us. Every single one of you have been at least maintaining eye contact with the speaker. They don't even look, they chuckle, they sit there and, you know, try to undermine, like insult. It's more of an insult to Fadya than it is to me to see John Rollins, for example, just sitting there completely ignoring us. And that's just one of the person. Everybody on the board does that, and it's even more of an insult to Fadya. But anyways, continuing with the demands, we've been calling for accountability against the Oklaun Police Department, and we demand the firing of Pat O'Donnell, Mark Hollingsworth, and Brandon Collins, who viciously abused a minor and put him in a concussion. We're calling for the firing of Officer Benjamin Thotlowski, the first responding officer who allowed LeAnn Cusack to go after striking Murad in the first place, and we are going to continue to demand an independent investigation against the Oklaun Police Department and their racism towards the Arab community who not only live here, but also visit here and are very close by. We're going to continue these rallyings, calling for justice for these people, and this is the first time you've seen us here, probably, one of the first times, but it may not be the last.
Thank you.
Ask that you take action.
Thank you.
I don't think Mr. Paul Mallow is paying attention. I see you on your phone.
He was the one who wasn't, but I have to give credit to him.
Next.
I'm going to pronounce this wrong.
Kurti?
No. Yep.
Yep.
I couldn't quite read it.
It's okay. My name is Supi Kurti.
Are you an Oklaun resident?
Yes, I am. That was my mother who was speaking first.
Oh, okay.
Who is next to me now. I'm not just a current member, I was actually in the community itself. I played football here, I went to high school here.
Grammar school, middle school?
From grammar school all the way through high school, all the way to college. I stayed here. Now, following everything that my mother said, what more can I say as my part as being a man, my brother's keeper, shielding everything that comes this way, him not having a record at all or whatsoever, and I'm sure they went and did a record behind her and seen what she has. It was a Monday at 5:30 in the afternoon, and she's drunk while he comes home from-- Do you know that they took her word while he was on the floor dying? They put the blame on him until they seen the cameras that I had. That's when everything changed. There was a certain email that went around from the village manager to the chief of police stating that there was a possible drunk driver that killed somebody that happened just to vanish. So me being a man, what am I supposed to do? Prior to my brother passing away a few months before that with my father. So now I'm the head of the house. What do I do now? Terry, you were there. I walked you in to the building while you were paying your respect to me and my mother. What am I supposed to do here now? I can't answer these questions to my mother because I have the same questions myself. Yeah? That's all that's left, is just to stare and wonder why, right? I don't have a problem standing way back. I'll wait here all day. It's been a year already, I'm still waiting for answers. Nothing, is there?
Sir, this is not a debate.
I'm not debating anybody. I'm here and having a conversation.
No, that's not how this works. You're allowed three minutes to state--
Did my three minutes pass?
No, I don't think it is.
Okay, then.
But it's a show of luck to know when it is.
We could all hear--
We reached in discussion here. You're stating your feelings and your positions, and it's being heard. We don't get into discussions and arguments on the topic.
I didn't ask that.
Well, you're looking for answers from this board, and that's not how it works.
This board handles everything. We went through every channel. We even had to do our own investigation as she stated. How come I had to go to the bar with them? I have the whole video, the security videos. Do you want to see that? You guys are the ones in charge? You guys are the ones who are hiring, firing, or less firing, I should say? And also, you guys want us to let, what was his name, Better, that sent out, we were after money or something?
For financial gain. Financial gain.
What kind of financial gain are we going to get from that? You yourself, Terry, promised us justice. I'm just stating facts. I'm not here to make a debate. We can watch the presidential one for that one. But just like anyone else, I have the same question. Just put yourself in my shoes. What am I supposed to do here?
Do we let this go as if it didn't happen?
No, we'll still be here. Same thing.
Do we just wake up in the morning and say, "Oh, we can go about our life now as if it didn't happen"? Is that what--
Thank you.
Now that time is up.
Next.
Yahara? Is that correct?
Hello, my name is Yahara, and I've been a resident for a few years. And on June 5th of 2023, I lost a love of my life and my best friend. His mom and brother lost a part of themselves, and many say, "I can't imagine what you're going through," but truth is, you can. We all have loved ones that we can't see life without. The privilege you have is that you just imagine that life without them, and that fear and heartbreak you feel for a split second is something that we have to live with on our daily basis now. You have heard about the case, and we'll keep hearing about the case, but I want to talk about Murad, how family meant everything to him, and they are the most important thing to him, how he would give their shirt off his back, how there is nothing that he wouldn't do for his loved one. Murad was caring, independent, and such a responsible person, so hardworking that he could achieve anything that he put his mind to, a problem solver, and one of the best ones I knew, and he would find a solution to anything. He would always say, "Everything is fixable, except for one thing, and we are living the unfixable now." There's so much more I could say about him, but there's only three minutes. He had so many plans and goals left to achieve, and LeAnn Cusack took that away from him and him from us. But the Oklaun Police Department left us without closure and justice, instead just left us with questions and a bigger heartache having to fight for justice he deserves month to month, and that we will keep fighting month to month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Hi, Amy. Oklaun resident?
I am an Oklaun resident.
Thank you.
My child goes, my kids go to Oklaun High School. On the day of the accident, I was actually at my son's summer league game when we received a call about Murad Kurti. And then upon later review, my whole thing was with Mr. Lovely Robert Olson that you guys have in Oklaun here, his bars in Oklaun, his life in Oklaun, and then the publicity and the information that he has in his bathrooms going on. If you need a blow and a breathalyzer, you need to get pulled over by the cops, this happens to you, call Bob Olson, your DUI attorney, in his own bar on Southwest Highway. Pretty shameful, pretty shameful. One thing that, you know, life goes on, right? We're trying to move on. Fadya will never have closure, we understand that. LeAnn, one day, karma will do its own for anyone who didn't get injustice on their own. It will happen on its own. I don't wish anyone bad. Karma will do it on its own. But to have an attorney be in the Village of Oklaun with that type of reputation in there, and then us be here in a meeting in one of the months where all the cops are aware of the signage, and they're like, no one really could do anything about it. He comes in the courtroom, knows the judge, knows how to get it dismissed, and everything gets dismissed with all the rest of the DUIs that happen. Pretty damn shameful, but it's popular business, right? Have a bar, be a DUI lawyer. I'm like, I'm in the wrong field working at the bank. So, I don't know, I just think that you guys really need to look at who your business owners are and actually pay attention to what's really going on in the community, because it's right underneath our eyes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rania? Rania?
Good evening.
comes in the courtroom, knows the judge, knows how to get it dismissed, and everything gets dismissed with all the rest of the DUIs that happen. Pretty damn shameful, but it's popular business, right? Have a bar, be a DUI lawyer. I'm like, I'm in the wrong field working at the bank. So I don't know. I just think that you guys really need to look at who your business owners are and actually pay attention to what's really going on in the community because it's right underneath our eyes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rania? Rania?
Uh, good evening. Um, I am a resident of the village of Orland Park, but I am always organizing here in the community, here in Oaklawn and the surrounding, uh, south suburban areas as well. So, uh, first thing I would like to mention is that I think it's obviously clear that this police department continues to show a repeated behavior which has become a pattern of violence by Oaklawn Police Department amongst, onto our communities here. So we here and much more have come to the monthly meetings every single month for over two years. And when we come to the meetings every single month, we have to undergo a series of rules, essentially. So we have to stand in fire line to get into this room at a set time, which that set time constantly changes, whether it's 6:15, whether it's 6:20, whether it's 6:30. It's random. It's when, it's whenever, you know, the police officers downstairs feel like letting us in, right? Um, we have to go through security as well in order to get to this room. Um, in order to even enter the building, we have to go through security, all of us here, right? Um, and not to mention of the time when there were actually snipers on top, on the roof, actually, watching us when we gathered together in support of Fadya, I think around a year ago, snipers. Just, just for the community to gather and support a mother who was grieving her son who was killed by a white woman who was driving under the influence, who was let go, right? So also to add, right, this department's police and the commissioner board have consistently made inappropriate remarks. They have aggressively put their hands on us, including minors. They have made minors, young girls that are in high school uncomfortable, right? They, uh, they continue to make comments. They make jokes. They continue to harass us. They continue to violate us just for us to what? Come here and tell them that they have, there's a serious issue of violence here, that this police department needs to know that they have this repeated pattern of violence? So we come, meeting after meeting, right? We are violated. We are harassed, but we come, meeting after meeting, to say the same exact thing, right? We are constantly repeating ourselves because it has proven time after time that we will not be heard. And that's not surprising to me or to any of us, but we will continue to reiterate and say it again and again until our demands are heard. So we learned that the violence of Oaklawn Police Department, we learned of the violence that they have allowed to happen to the Kurti family, right? And also to remind you that the reason why we even started coming here in the first place is because three police officers beat a 17-year-old Arab boy. They beat him almost to death. He was unconscious. And then a year later is when police, this police department let go a white woman who was driving under the influence, who hit Murad Kurti and killed him. They let her go. So we are coming to these meetings for months in regards to demanding justice for Hadi, right? Who was, again, a 17-year-old boy who was beaten almost to death by three police officers, right? One of them being Officer Hollingsworth. And now we have also been demanding justice for Hadi, for Murad, who was the young man who was murdered, of course.
Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Hussam?
Hi.
You an Oaklawn resident?
No, but I work in this community. Good evening. So what it is, what is it to be an elected official? All of you have been elected, right? You've elected officials. Your jobs is to make hard decisions. Hard decisions that will impact the community down the line positively. It's not just approving finances and approving allocations and zoning and whatever it is, right? You have to make tough decisions, tough decisions that you'll be remembered for, and tough decisions that will impact the community down the line. What kind of message are we giving the young people, our youth, the kids that are growing up in this community? What message are we telling them? If we allow this to happen and the family does not get justice? We're telling the kids, hey, it's okay. You could grow up in this community. You could be successful. You can have a successful job. You could be, you know, coming home from work, and then somebody who's drinking hits you, kills you, but the same police department that you've been paying taxes for all your life will not serve you justice. And although the community has been going after the police department for justice for two years, let's say one year for this case, nothing happens, and then the village board does not do anything about it. This is the time for you to make these hard decisions. This is the tough decisions that people have elected you to make. Clean up your police department. Investigate it, clean it up. Investigate what kind of corruption is happening with this attorney that she mentioned earlier. These are the things that you're supposed to be looking into. These are the decisions you're supposed to be making. How many more families? If, if this, if you let this go, then, then it's gonna happen again, and it's gonna happen again. But if justice is served, it will not happen again. People will think twice before they drink and drive. People will think twice before speeding. And not only that, I mean, she had a kid in the car too. She was endangering her own child. Guys, seriously, we don't want to keep coming, keep coming back here. We do not want to. I know you don't want us to come back here. The, the police department doesn't, the, the police and the fire commission don't want us to come back here, and we don't want to come back here either. Make hard decisions. That's what this community has elected you to do. That's what your legacy will be. What kind of justice, what kind of message are you sending to this community? Will justice be served or not? This is what this community wants, and this is what we're gonna keep demanding. If you want us out of here and never come back again, do the right thing. Otherwise, I promise you, we don't get tired, and we don't get bored. It's been two years. Every single month, we've gone to the police and, and the fire commission. What does that tell you? We will continue coming until there is justice served. And you don't want us to keep coming back here as well. I know you guys want to come in here, do your business and out, but if you come here and have all these people speak and have protests outside, it's gonna be ours every month. We don't want that, and that's why we're asking you, Mr. Terry and everyone else, make these hard decisions that you've been elected to make. Families and kids and youth and the future of this community depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Hi, Mark. Are you an Oaklawn resident?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But the, uh, foul stench of the Oaklawn Police Department reaches me at my house in Blue Island, and it has for 20 years. 20 years I've been working on police misconduct issues in the south suburbs. Uh, there is no community in the south suburbs that has the record of Oaklawn. There's no community in the south suburbs that has the reputation that Oaklawn has. Last time I spoke before you, I brought up the fact that the citizens of Oaklawn, the taxpayers, have been paying for dozens and dozens of lawsuits that were filed against the Oaklawn Police Department. Cases of harassment, cases of bullying, cases of people being beaten up. And this goes on and on and on, year after year. And you and your predecessors have just been forking out the taxpayers' money, just paying off these lawsuits, paying all the court fees, paying settlements, and not accepting responsibility. It is your responsibility to clean up this police department. It is your job. It is your duty. It is your pledge when you face that flag when you started your meeting for justice for everybody. You have not been doing that. And then when people point out the fact that your police department is engaging in these systematic beatings and harassment of the citizens of, not only of Oaklawn, but of the neighboring communities, then you lie to the public. You, Mr. Vorderer, and you, Mr. Stalker, you told me that I was not telling the truth last time I was here.
I never said anything ever. First time I met you, just to clarify.
Not true.
I don't ever recall talking with you, but go ahead.
And I made the same charge, uh, when, right after Hadi was beaten, that the village of Oaklawn has dozens of lawsuits filed against them in the recent years, and you told me I was mistaken. So I showed up at the police and fire commission and read them off a list of all of the case numbers of the federal lawsuits. I hadn't even gotten to the civil cases yet at that point. But you folks are neglecting your duty to clean up the police department. And then when people point out what's going on, you give them blank stares, you brush them off, or you flat out lie to the public that there's no problem. Well, there is a problem, and that you folks need to address that.
Thank you.
Nadia?
I am Oaklawn. Um, I want to start off by bringing up something that already happened today that really rubbed me off in the wrong way. Um, you said that you won't discuss any matters here and public comments, um, and you mentioned that to Supi, the brother of Murad Kurti. So when can you discuss the matter, then? You won't give the time and day to Fadya or Supi, even after a year, and they still haven't had closure for their son, for their brother who passed away, who was murdered? You can't even extend public comments, not even give her, you know, maybe five minutes? We had to extend the public comments for Fadya. I mean, there's not much more that I can say, that I can stand up here and say. Um, I'm a youth in the community. Um, you know, Fadya, the mother of Murad Kurti, and Supi, the brother of Murad Kurti, that have, they have already stated in their testimony that the community that has already come up before me has already stated. So I'll repeat what has been said. Leanne Cusack admitted to drinking and jiving after she hit and killed Murad Kurti. Oaklawn Police admitted that they had smelled alcohol on Leanne Cusack's breath, and after she refused a breathalyzer, they should have taken her into, for a forced blood draw. That's what should have happened. Instead, Oaklawn Police let a killer go with just a traffic violation, failure to reduce speed. And again, I mean, the mother came up here and said, why, why was that allowed to happen? The brother came up here and said, why was that allowed to happen? The community already came up here stating, why would she let go with just a traffic violation, failure to reduce speed? What message are you sending to the community? That anyone that can kill somebody can just be let go? It doesn't make sense. I mean, we've been going to the police and commission board meetings, and we've had the most outrageous encounters with them as well. Every month, they never let Fadya finish her testimony. They laugh and make jokes in the meeting, laugh and make jokes while we're coming month after month saying that Leanne Cusack shouldn't have murdered a person, shouldn't have murdered anybody, and be let go by the Oaklawn Police Department. And they continue to stonewall the family and our community members. And, you know, the, the even worse fact is that they stated that Fadya was doing this for financial gain. That doesn't make sense. And that's why we are here today. We are coming to demand accountability, to demand justice for Murad, and demand justice for Hadi. We demand the firing of racist cops like Patrick O'Donnell, Mark Hollingsworth, Brandon Collins, who viciously abused a minor, as well as firing Benjamin Thotlowski, the first responding officer that night, allowing Leanne to go free after striking and ultimately killing Murad Kurti. And of course, we're gonna demand a full, independent, and comprehensive investigation into the violation of the rights of Arab and people of color by the Oaklawn Police Department. And we're gonna continue to rally, and our community already said that. Every month, for two years, we've been at the police and commission board meetings, and we're gonna continue showing up until there's justice for Murad and justice for Hadi. And we're gonna continue showing up here as well. Do the right thing. It's not that hard.
Billy? Billy's the last name on the public comment list.
That's it? All right, well, I'm sure that there isn't anything I can say or this board can say that's going to rest, uh, your souls. And again, I sympathize with you, ma'am. I cannot imagine how tragic it is to lose your son. But just as a quick response, this incident was investigated not only by the Oaklawn policeman, but the state police, and as I understand, possibly the county police. They reviewed everything, and.
It was too late.
What their assessment, their assessment was is the investigation was thorough, complete, and properly done. You know, they're.
The alcohol was out of her blood system by then. We don't know what type of, what her alcohol.
Okay, well, I, I. Yes. Yes, that was all said, ma'am, okay?
I'm just letting you.
There, there is proper proceed. I was a policeman for 34 years. I was. Okay, that's it. That's it.
No, no, this is ridiculous.
Okay.
You're taking over the fact that you, the Oaklawn Police screwed up.
No, they did not, sir. The Oaklawn Police.
Yes, they did. If I go out and drink and hit someone and kill them, you're telling me that I'm just gonna walk away?
You are, you are out of order, sir.
Doesn't matter. This is ridiculous. Listen to yourself.
If you don't, if you keep shouting, I'll ask the police to remove you. Please remove this gentleman. I'm willing to talk to anybody, but I'm not gonna be shouted at and screamed at.
And I'm willing to fund this.
You may leave, sir, on your own, or I'll have the police remove you.
You may answer Ms. Kurti's question.
You may leave on your own, or the police will remove you.
Can we ask, what are you planning to do?
Nothing. The investigation has been thorough and complete.
So you're not gonna do anything about these cops?
All right, we're gonna move on now to the, uh, next thing on the agenda. Approval of the closed meeting minutes of 2024-06 dated July 9, 2024. Motion, please? Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
The family's here, and they're asking you questions. The family's here and they're asking you questions.
Trusty Mallow.
You say you have sympathy.
Trusty Stalker. Trusty Sock.
Justice for who?
Yes.
Justice for who? Murad Kurti. Justice for who?
Okay. We get a motion? Okay, vote, vote over the top.
Trusty Pampa.
Call the roll call.
Trusty O'Nita.
Justice for who? Murad Kurti. 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 Justice for who?
All right, all right, all right. If you do not stop and let us allow our meeting, I will ask the police to clear the room. You are accomplishing nothing. You are accomplishing nothing. Thank you. Would you bring the police, remove these people from this room? Yeah, yeah, remove this guy. Five-minute break, Terry. Five-minute break. All right, we have a five-minute recess. Don't move. All the same room. Five-minute recess.
Murad Kurti. Murad Kurti. Murad Kurti.
I don't know where they're walking.
Murad Kurti.
Yes.
Murad Kurti. Murad Kurti.
Ah, yeah.
Murad Kurti. Murad Kurti.
I guess it's just.
Murad Kurti. Murad Kurti. Murad Kurti. Justice for who? 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 Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. 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 Justice for who? Murad Kirdi.
Please stand up.
I will ask you one more time, please.
We are now asking everyone to leave voluntarily.
Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi.
What do you think you're accomplishing?
Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who?
Remove that guy. Remove him.
Murad Kirdi.
Remove him.
The board is asking everyone to leave at this time, please.
Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Say his name.
The board is asking everyone to leave at this time. Thank you.
Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Say his name.
Remove that young lady.
Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? 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 Murad Kirdi. Say his name. 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 Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi.
I, I
Murad Kirdi.
Part take.
Say his name. Murad Kirdi. 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 Justice for who? 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 Murad Kirdi. Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? 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 Murad Kirdi. Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Say his name.
Bye-bye.
Say his name.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Thank you.
Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Say his name.
We'll be here every time. You should know us. You're a father. Why are you others?
Say his name. Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? 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 Murad Kirdi. Justice for who?
All these for us, for what?
Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Say his name. 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 Murad Kirdi. Justice for who?
You're always at anything.
Justice for who? Murad Kirdi. Justice for who?
You're already getting probably out of the club today, and they're like, hey buddy, come here.
Murad Kirdi. Say his name. 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 Murad Kirdi. Murad Kirdi. Justice for who? 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 Murad Kirdi.
Did you get a vote on that minute?
I did.
Okay. Do I have to take a motion, go back in session? Okay.
Did you tell me all that this was going to happen?
I don't know, no.
I'm good, I'm good.
No, they said that they didn't announce it or put it out.
All right, we'll move on with the meeting. We'll start with number six. Approval of the regular meeting minutes twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, dated August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Sock.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oleni Chuck.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I think he's got to leave.
Approval of special meeting minutes twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. Motion, please.
Motion approve.
Second.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Sock.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oleni Chuck.
Yes.
Motion passes. No business by trustees. Alex?
Yeah, I, I, as we hear the protesters leaving, being a veteran, this is what we in America stand for, is your right to, you don't have a right to interrupt a meeting, disrupt a meeting, call people names, and make false accusations. Just in the speeches that have been talked there, we heard coward, we heard snipers that were out in the crowd protecting, uh, people, which I know that our police department does, takes great pride in protecting all people's rights to assemble, just like we had at the fall in the green, we had security up in the air giving us a better eye. I will tell you that I do sympathize with the family, uh, that lost someone. I could never, never imagine going through that, uh, that, that same type of situation. But there's no amount of protest, shouting or protesting will change the fact that our police officers conducted a thorough investigation and followed the law. That's a fact. And to the Murad Kirdi family, my deepest condolences and sympathy. When it comes to some of the other accusations that were made here about our police department, I quite honestly cannot stand for it. What they failed to mention is the individual that they allege our police officers, um, beat up had a loaded gun on him. No one ever mentions that. I will tell you this, I have absolutely no problem with people wanting to come out and speak to us, but as soon as they, in their protest, didn't get the answers that they want, which by the way, this is a village board, you're not going to get answers at the village board. We're here to conduct village business. This is a legal matter that was thoroughly investigated and vetted, and the other matter that we really can't comment on is the village has to remain quiet because one of our officers is still on trial in Cook County for the incident that happened. When all the facts come out, all this protesting will be shown for what it was, a ridiculous and embarrassing waste of time for those who are protesting about the individual that was, um, taken into custody with a loaded gun. I'm a little bit emotional about this because as we do this, this is the village that we live in, these are the people that we raise our children with, and we want them to have good examples. A good example of protesting is how things started out, stating the facts that were before them, their emotions, and asking for questions. So a lot of the questions had been answered, as our village president has explained. It turned into a shouting match, and it turned into accusations and name-calling. None by this board. All we did was listen. But the people who were out there protesting, which is not fair to us as a village board, and it's not fair to our residents' business. So I, 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 I understand the concerns, but I, I will not have this board be verbally abused, nor our police department verbally abused for doing their jobs. And I will tell you that what makes America great is our right to protest and our freedom of speech. And I believe in that one hundred and ten percent, and I believe that every citizen has that right. But there are certain extents for freedom of speech. So off the cuff, i- it's very hard to sit up here knowing all of the good things that this village stands for, all the good things that our police department stands for. Matter of fact, all the good things that our public works, our fire department stand for, all the people that come out here and their day, day-to-day job. I'm sorry. So for that, uh, excuse me for being a little bit, uh, upset about things, but it's not fair, uh, to, to, uh, the residents of the village of Oaklawn for the type of verbal abuse that we just went through. And I don't know if the cameras saw, uh, after the cameras went off, the other verbal abuse where one person was sitting with, within less than six feet of me, uh, spewing names at me, and I don't even think I know the gentleman, nor have I ever met the gentleman. So, um, I was very happy to see how our village works, and proof of what our village can do is, uh, the Fall Music Fest that we just went through, in which we had a tremendous amount of Oaklawn residents that came into. Our public works did a tremendous job setting it up, led by the direction of our special events and the committee, who put together a very fine venue for our residents' view handle. Our staff, uh, from the police department, the fire department, everybody worked very, very hard and tirelessly, put on such a great event, uh, in which many of the Oaklawn residents enjoyed. I saw people out there dancing to, to big band music. I saw kids getting face painted. I had a magician that, uh, was able to do a couple of magic trips that, that were pretty good. But I saw a great melting pot of the residents of the village of Oaklawn, not only enjoying our village green, but enjoying each other. So that's the type of village of Oaklawn that we need to continue to build and strive for and work for. I don't really have nothing more to say. I'm sorry, I just, it gets very difficult when, um, we have to work within the law and let the law do the work, and those are the decisions that are made by our judicial system, both by the county and by the federal judicial system, and, um, we have to have our faith in the law. So that concludes my comments.
Well said, Alex. Paul?
Thank you, Alex. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I agree with what Alex just said. I mean, it's difficult, um, you know, when people are screaming at you that you've never even met before, and they're screaming things at you. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's hard. I mean, I feel for her. She lost her son. I mean, accidents happen. There's, there's people that I know that have lost young kids, you know, when, when children die before their parents, it's a difficult situation. Um, you know, it's not this board's job to give justice, it's, it's the judicial system, as Alex said. Um, so moving on to this past weekend, again, um, I have a lot of thank yous to give regarding this weekend. First time Phalen for his organization of this event. Um, without him, it doesn't go as smoothly as possible. I mean, there's always bumps in the road, but, um, he did a fabulous job setting up a lot of different things that you don't see, uh, behind the scenes, that was all taken care of, um, very, very well. Um, Bill Meyer, his Public Works Crew, uh, the amazing job that they did setting up, cleaning after, doing everything that they do that you also don't see. I mean, numerous times, both Saturday and Sunday, I showed up and it looked like no one had ever been there. It was the first, you know, nine o'clock in the morning, it was just like it was brand new. Um, and I know that's, uh, thanks to Bill's guys that were there, um, into the evening, uh, making sure it was all safe and clean and, and set up. Uh, Gary Godino and Chris Thomas, their event staff, uh, they did an amazing job keeping everything, uh, moving, uh, rolling through answers that people had, all the people bands that came in, all the questions that arose. Um, they took a, 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 every effort that they could do to make sure that all of those things were, were handled, uh, immediately. Um, and that was, uh, a great job by both Gary and Chris. Uh, Vern Zumhagen, uh, and his production crew for the amazing visuals that they provided to the community. Um, it's a great step in the right direction. I think we've gotten better each year with the visuals, um, and, and I can't wait to see where that, that moves, but, uh, his crew did a great job. Deidre Dasiak and the AEC Commission, uh, the volunteers for helping, uh, you know, each and every day, every, um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, all the jobs that needed to be done, the AEC Commission stepped up and, and, uh, I do not believe that there's not one of them that didn't do some type of job during that, that event. So I thank you to those volunteers that stood up and signed that sheet on, on a job to do. The Finance Department, Adam Metz, Kim Bohanek, Jerry Dillon, Abby Levi, working all weekend, moving, making sure everything was safe with the dollars that were there, making sure our ticket booths were, were supplied with what they needed and make sure that all that stuff was taken care of. You know, they worked very, very hard every single minute of, of that fest. And of course, Chief Atorio, Chief McMillan, your guys were amazing this weekend. Just the safety that, that everyone felt, you know, numerous times I see your Chiefs Police Department, Chiefs Fire Department talking with residents, being, you know, interacting with them and talking with us. It was great to see community come together and they're all, they all wanted to talk to them. So it was, it was nice to see. I don't believe we had, other than a few scrapes, I believe, one of the firemen told me that, you know, just a few Band-Aids were handed out. So I don't think there was anything that was major as far as injuries and as far as incidents. So I thank them for that. And last but not least, my, my, the village, the village, the village residents for showing up to this fest. You make the fest work. You make the fest safe by, by enjoying yourself and not getting into any, any issues. And they showed up en masse. I believe this was most likely the biggest event that we've ever had from Friday, Saturday and Sunday number wise. Just, you know, Vern's drone was up there. I know there was a police drone up there too, but we had a, an entertainment drone and just the numbers that you see out there from the green, from the gazebo stage and then out on the main stage, just a tremendous amount of people out there and all enjoying themselves, getting home safe and basically just having. But I'm glad the village showed up for it. That was the main goal of the AEC was to make this event become an Oaklawn event because, you know, in the past, I think we've been lacking our residents and I think they showed up en masse this weekend. Kudos to our, our, our whole staff and to make that work. So that ends my report, Terry. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. If I could just make a comment, you know what? We had thousands, maybe tens of thousands of residents there and people from outside the community enjoying a phenomenal weekend. But one of the, maybe I got three comments from these residents about all this major event in these times where we have so many atrocities and so many times when these events end up in chaos, that they felt completely safe, okay? And that's because of the presence of the Police Department. And I was very proud to say that one time I was an Oaklawn policeman. They're better today than I was in the days, so. All right. Jamie Pembroke, Trustee Pembroke.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I also want to congratulate Trustee Mallow, his team, the Arts and Events Committee, on a great weekend. The Public Works Department did such a great job, the administrative staff, the volunteers and obviously police fire and the EMTs that were at the, at the fest over the weekend. It was, it was great. It was outstanding. The second thing I want to bring up is, I want to say thank you to Lorraine Swanson for the article she wrote in Patch about the scooters on the streets throughout the village that I personally have a big concern with. I thought it was a good article. I'm amazed at the number of people that have stopped me and talked to me about it, sent me emails about it, left phone messages and texts for me. I even got, what is it called? I think it's called a PM, private message.
PM, yeah.
Is it a DM, PM, whatever? But I got those from, this is students that, that I had years ago in high school and that. But they were also saying outlaw, get rid of them, you know, that kind of stuff. Anyways, I do think, I saw the email from our legal team about what the state just did in terms of making a policy on it. So I think we're going to have to have some discussions possibly down the road about it. Personally, I hate to see them just get eliminated because, you know, I think they, they do serve a purpose, but I definitely think some education needs to go on for the families and the, particularly the young people. If they had, you know, if they've had driver's ed, there's a lot of nine, 10, 12-year-olds that've never had the rules of the road. Anyways, I think that's something we're going to have to address down the road. That's it, Mayor.
If I could make a comment just in regards to that, Jamie, just, just as I was coming here tonight on 52nd Avenue, there was about nine kids crossing the street, crossing 95th Street, eight of them walking, one on a scooter.
Yeah.
Scooter was across the street first and they were waiting for the light to turn green. And he is just rolling around, like if he was on a bike, those are not the things that he would be doing.
Right.
He would be waiting on his bike, waiting for them to cross, but he is zipping through traffic, right around cars, all the way through, you know, somebody who was turning right had to wait for him because, you know, he was kind of going back up on the sidewalk into the street, over across the street where Smash Burger is. And it's just like, you know, he had no care in the world until, you know, somebody turns and hits him and then I got to jump out and call 911 because he's on the ground because somebody hit him. And it's just, he has no concern at all that, you know, it was a red, because at least all the seven people that were waiting are, are waiting because it's not their turn to cross the street and.
When you're 10, 11, 12 years old, you don't have any concerns. Life is good, you know, you're, you're just doing what you do.
Right.
Whatever comes into your head first, you do it and then you live with the consequences. But the consequences are much different when you're out in the middle of the street.
Sure.
You know, than when you're at the park climbing fences or something, you know, so.
Well, I know that we've asked legal to give us opinion and the mayor has gotten an update today. Mayor, are you going to talk about what the state has said? Well, actually, the state of Illinois just did some legislation requiring scooter operators to be 18 years of age and have driver's licenses. So that puts it in the realm of police enforcement. The state also allows municipalities to even tighten that up if they would like to ban them. And as the trustee said, banning them may not be the solution. But I do believe that if we were to enforce the driver's license and the 18 years of age requirement, we will have addressed the safety concerns for our children. They're not, the children aren't going to be happy and I'm sure we're going to have a few parents unhappy when we take their scooters and have the parents come down and pick them up at the station. But it's better than losing your son or daughter in some type of traffic accident with those scooters. So we'll look into it in the future, but we'll wait for the state to pass the legislation. Has it been passed?
It's been passed.
Okay.
But we need to, we need to look at our codes. There's really nothing in our code right now that addresses it.
Okay.
And if, if you recall, these, these electric scooter things became an issue maybe like 10 or 12 years ago.
Big cities.
They were popping up everywhere and then they sort of died down, but they're back again. So we can, we're, we're going to look at the code and see what we need to do to comply with the new statute and.
Okay.
Get everything in order.
Tom?
Are you done, Jamie?
Well, I just want to ask Tom one follow-up question. I, when I was reading through that, if it said low-speed vehicles and then it said vehicles with a speed of 10 or less miles per hour, but some of these scooters, I mean, once you get at Sam's Club, do 19, 20 miles.
Yeah, they go.
Or 25, you know?
Pretty fast. That's part of what we need to look at, Trustee Pembroke, to, to see how we need, how the village board wants to fashion its rules for those things in conjunction with the statute.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's it, that's all I have.
Trustee Stocker?
Yeah, I just want to thank Paul, Bill Meyer, Paul Mallow, Bill Meyer, the Police and Fire Department. I had real concerns about what might happen at the fest this year because of what's happened at other fests in the past. This was probably the best run, most fun, enjoyable fest I've ever been at. And that's saying a lot because we've had some pretty damn good ones in the past. But you guys have been very instrumental in making this a real success, in my opinion. I agree with everything that Paul said. You know, I, I think that everything went off very well and it was so nice to see the Police Department, all the drones in the air and people being just as nice as could be. I didn't see any trouble, you know, and normally alcohol and people cause a problem. I didn't see anything.
I don't think there were any police incidents. I asked a policeman on Saturday night, they had nothing.
Yeah, yeah. I thought it was great. I think there, there's a lot of relief on the part of Oaklawn residents or the people that came to the fest, that there is a place they could go to be safe, have a good time, great bands. And, you know, I think everybody really enjoyed themselves. But thank you for a great job. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Trustee Sack?
I want to, I'll build on what Bud was saying too. It was a great weekend. I was there all three nights. Again, no incidents, the police showing out there was phenomenal. We had officers everywhere. They weren't, luckily, they weren't needed. It was, everybody controls themselves. I think this is the third year that it was adults only unless you're supervised. So this year, when you added the airbrush tattoo, the magician and these couple other things, people brought their children with them, kids had a great time, the parents loved it. Every single comment I got was 100% positive. It, it was just phenomenal. It's, if you want to make it a family event now, you can, but the people that do that, it's a family, they're bringing their children, they're sitting with their kids, they're listening to music at the big stage. It was, was well-run, you know, from Public Works, the Police Department, Fire Department, the whole Arts and Events Committee, they deserve a big round of applause. Addressing what just took place tonight, my heart breaks for Mrs. Currie, but a thorough investigation took place. Sometimes people on the other side don't like what the investigation shows and that's understandable. I, you know, everybody has the freedom of speech and to be able to say what they want, but there was thorough investigation that was conducted. That's it, enough said, you know, people aren't going to always like what happens, but that's what took place. As for the other incident, we can't say too much about that because there's still an ongoing trial, but we'll, we'll come out of that at the end when these people were out here, again, to what Trustee Oleniecheck said. He had a gun, right? That never comes up. It's, it, it, it just baffles me when, when people get up there and they want to talk about things. This, this young man had a gun. When the police tell you to stop and you listen, none of this happens. You choose to do what that individual did, that's unfortunately what happens. The police have a job to do. They did the job, the kid had a gun on him and that's, that's what happened. So if the police say stop and you listen, none of this happens. So, you know, it's all unfortunate, but, you know, our, our Police Department is the best around. I support them 100% and I always will, just like this whole board. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Assistant Village Manager's report, do you have anything to?
Yes, Mayor, just one thing just to add what Trustee Sack said. The, the village has met with the Currie family, Currie lawyer, one-on-one in meetings, so it's not like the village officials, the management hasn't listened to the Currie family. So I just want to make it clear that they have come, we've, we've sat down with them, we explained it and, you know, they gave them a fair hearing, so this is really not the first time they're, they're explaining it to us, just to make sure that's, that's for the record.
Has this gone to court?
The, my, the.
The, the woman has.
Yeah, the woman has, yeah. And that, and that, and that woman has been convicted, as they said, of crime and sentenced. And the village has no criminal aspect in this part of it.
I understand.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to know.
They mentioned a $750 fine. She also loses her license right here, right?
Correct.
You know, we, I think we've tried everything we can to be sympathetic to the cau, her problems. I even went to the services for her son long before all this controversy began, simply because I saw the, the pain and the suffering of losing a child. And I thought maybe as the mayor, I can go there and offer some sign of support. So I believe this village has done just about everything it can, properly investigating the case, taking it to other law enforcement sources to have a review of it, which they exonerated and said the police did a great job. I understand that people have opinions and facts sometimes do not influence their opinions. So I, I suppose we're going to be dealing with this for a while, but it's not going to change. The investigation has been conducted and it should be laid to rest. And I suppose if there's a civil suit, that's something that the family must take up with their attorney and there's nothing we have and can do about that.
Yeah, but Mr. Mayor, I just want to add to it. You, you, you conducted yourself, you were speaking perfectly fine and I think what you explained to that gentleman who was in the back screaming, yelling and hollering at you is that you'll, you'll discuss anything with anybody, but not being screamed at and hollered at and yelled at and basically threatened. I, I, that's the thing that still concerns me is I guess if their demands aren't completely met and you heard what their demands are, they want people fired, they want, they, they named specific people that they want terminated and that's what their demands are and, you know, we, we have to follow due process, we have to follow the law. But when somebody's actually sitting out there and asking for demands like that and then when you try to talk to them, get yelled and screamed at, that's not civil disobedience.
Well, you know, there is a segment of society do not like police, do not like authority and I think don't like government. I think we might have a little bit of that here. And that's okay, as you said, that's their right.
That's what makes America great.
And they're welcome to come here and if they want to conduct themselves like that, I suppose we'll add an extra hour to our agenda at every meeting and listen to them. Nothing more can be said about it, Alex. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routinely brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, Village Manager or Village Committees and will be enacted with one motion if discussion is desired. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request the Board of Trustees approval to waive the village resource fees in the amount of $280 for the St. Catherine Charger Crawl to be held Saturday, September 14, 2024. B, request the Board of Trustees approval. Four, the St. Linus Men's Club to host their annual softball tournament at Lawn Manor Park and to waive the village resource fees of $350.60 associated with the event to be held Sunday, September 15, 2024. C, request the Board of Trustees approval for the St. Catherine's Men's Club to host their annual softball tournament on Lawn Manor Park and to waive the village resource fees of $350.60 associated with the event to be held on Saturday, September 21. D, request the Board of Trustees approval for the Oaklawn Community High School Homecoming Parade for Wednesday, September 25, during the hours of 4:30 PM through 7:15 PM. The streets will be closed on Austin Avenue between 89th and 95th Street. Request the Board of Trustees approval to waive the village resource fee for the Oaklawn Community High School Parade in the amount of $1,118.94, which again, will be held on Wednesday, September 25, 2024. F, request Board of Trustees approval in direction of the Traffic Safety Committee's recommendation, 5-0, for a guardrail or pylons on the parkway in front of 5015 West 99th Street. G, ordinance 241558, an ordinance authorizing the installation of a guardrail in the parkway in front of the residence located at 5015 West 99th Street. H, resolution 241562, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approval of an agreement with Power Phone Incorporated in the amount of $113,785 for software licensing implementation and training services for 2024, 2025 and $23,472.80 for software licensing and training services for the year 2026. And I, resolution 251563, a resolution approving a bid from G&amp;M Cement Construction Incorporated for the CDBGADA replacement project in the amount of $588,640. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? Hearing on, call the vote.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
This past Village Clerk's report.
Disbursement Resolution Number 2024-15D dated September 10, 2024 in the amount
Motion to pay the bill?
Motion to pay the bills, second.
Second, roll call.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Oleniecheck?
Yes.
Motion passes. Early voting information?
Early voting will take place for the general election at the Oaklawn Public Library in the lower meeting room seat. Those dates begin Monday, October 21 and run through Monday, November 4. Village Hall will remain a polling place for the general election on Tuesday, November 5 for those who live in the precinct.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Village.
The auditorium, Bill.
It will not.
Village President's report. A, Ordinance 241559, an ordinance amending Title III Business and License Regulations, Chapter 3, Liquor Control, Section 336 of the Oaklawn Village Code relative to classifications of liquor licenses, closing hours and regulated change for Sunday sales. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Oleniecheck?
Yes.
Motion passes. I have a proclamation for Constitution Week. The Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois proclaiming the week of September 17 through September 23, 2024 as Constitution Week in Oaklawn. Now, therefore, Terry Vorder, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2024 as Constitution Week. And I urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American citizen with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Proclaim this day, the 10th of September, 2024. Now, I have a couple of general issues. First off, I'd like to ask, Mr. Meyer, are you familiar with the construction that's going on at 95th and Harlem? I see a lot of heavy equipment out there. They're really cutting into the ground. What are they doing? Do you know?
Mayor, yes. They are just getting started on their reconstruction project for 95th and Harlem. The whole interchange is going to be reconfigured. They're going to be taking it from the current cloverleaf and they're going to be making it like a half cloverleaf. If residents have some questions or looking for some more info, I would just like to point them to our website under Latest News. I do have regular updates on there and I have a map that kind of shows all the various pieces of the project. But I will let everyone know, please avoid the area if possible. There's going to be significant traffic delays while this work is being done. There are going to be lanes closed and then reopened because they are reconfiguring the cloverleaf's current positioning. They're also widening 95th Street and lowering it approximately a foot because of that bridge impasse there on Harlem that's been hit by many semis as we've seen over the years. So they have to replace a large part of the structure. So there will be quite a few traffic tie-ups and IDOT is predicting this project to complete in late 2025.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Is there anything, Bill, with 294 regarding, is that just going to be harder to get to 294 since it's?
Well.
The cloverleaf?
It should be easier when complete. They are widening, so they are going to add a lane on the north side, which will be a commuter lane that will hopefully improve the flow. As we all know, when we go westbound trying to get over to the right and get onto 294, they are going to have a dedicated lane now, which hopefully should help traffic, improve flow as well as safety for the motor in public.
So you say the closures, are they overnight? It's something that's overnight when they're actually going to close 95th Street?
So we're told that they're only going to close one lane at a time and they will not completely shut down the roadway, but I know there will be roving closures at times just because of the way the ramp configurations are. And that's why I said if the residents get a chance, look online. We do have a nice printed item they can print or just review and they can see some of the configuration changes that IDOT's planning for that location.
Okay, thanks, Bill. I can see where that's going to be a couple of years of mass confusion and backlogs and traffic. I think I'm going to get on the towway at 127, so 95th Street.
Well said, well said, Mayor.
All right, I, I want to, I want to comment also, Bill, on our hometown hero banners. This has been extremely successful. Our banners now run from Pulaski Avenue already, almost Harlem Avenue, right? And I'd like you to research, talk with the village manager, see if it's possible. If we get more requests where we can send them down Cicero Avenue too, which is a well-traveled thing, okay? Would you, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Yes, and one more thing. Tomorrow is 9/11, 23 years ago, as we all know. America had the biggest terrorist attack on its soil. Over 2,900 people died in that attack. We in the Village of Oaklawn are very fortunate to have perhaps the largest collection of steel from those World Trade Centers, which the previous mayor with the Rotary Club sculpted into a beautiful memorial artistic design. The VFW, Veterans of Foreign design. The VFW, Veterans of Foreign War, tomorrow at 9:00 AM, along with one of our local grade schools, with cooperation of the Village of Oklaun, will be holding an event. Probably won't be more than a half an hour. I realize that I'm probably not talking to anybody, and this will not be online for tomorrow, but I'd like to invite all your trustees to be there. It'll be a wonderful event, always is. With that, I'll take a motion.
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 Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't think anybody wanted to hang around anymore.